Okay, I think we're all set to go.
Okay, thank you. This is the Wednesday, February 2nd meeting of the Springfield Planning Board. Phil, if you would talk a little bit about our Zoom meeting and then do the roll call.
Yeah, just for everybody's information, as well as those who may be watching the meeting. Due to the Zoom requirements of these meetings, the planning board is holding all hearings in a two-phase process. All new items tonight will be heard by the planning board. The petitioners will be allowed to present. The planning board will then be able to ask questions. The item, however, will not be voted on. It will be continued until the following meeting. This meeting tonight will be aired tomorrow on Focus Springfield, which will allow any individuals who have the desire to watch the meeting to watch it and then provide comment. If they choose to do so, they can provide comment either by voicemail. At the following meeting, any items received or any comments received will be read into the record. And then the item would be voted on at that meeting. So again, it's a little delayed process, but hopefully when we get back to face-to-face. But right now, that's how the meetings are being run. So on the roll call, Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Minio?
Here.
Dan Yelly?
Here.
Ms. Moran?
Here.
Steve Filippo?
Here.
Mr. Florian?
Yeah.
Ms. McQuaid?
Here.
And Ms. Choi? I believe is absent, but we do have a corner.
Thank you. Phil, if you would start with the first continued hearing.
Yeah, so under public hearings continued, we're actually going to go through most of these pretty quickly because liquor license for 427 White Street for Tucasa Restaurant. I did receive a phone call today from Anna from the License Commission, who informed me that the petitioner is actually in the hospital. She was supposed to be here today, but she was not going to be released in time for the meeting, so she had asked that this item be continued until the February, I believe it's the February 16th meeting.
Okay, well, we wish her well, and I will accept a motion to continue the hearing.
I move to continue the hearing.
I'll second it. Thank you.
So voting to continue the meeting, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Dan Yelly?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
Ms. Choi absent. So the, under the next continued hearing, zone change number 3225 or 797 Berkshire Avenue. It appears we're getting finally to the end of this, but it's not quite ready to go. The conservation commission, the plans by the owner of the property were submitted to the Conservation Commission, but they were supposed to meet on the 25th, but for some reason couldn't. So they're hopefully meeting within the next week. The owner was hoping to have those plans hopefully approved by the conservation before he moves forward. So this should be ready to go at the February 16th hearing and then ultimately to the city council at the end of the month. If I could just have another motion to continue this until the 16th.
I'll make a motion to continue, zone change number 3225 till the 16th.
Second.
So voting to continue, zone change number 3225, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Dan Yelly?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
And Ms. Choi? Absent. So the next item is for zone change 3227. Attorney Malick is actually here for another item, but he has indicated to me that they are still working on the plans to submit to the Department of Public Works. I don't know if you want to add anything, attorney, or whether you just want to move forward with a continuance. I think you muted yourself, attorney.
I'd like to go forward with the continuance, please.
Okay.
I wanted to have the planning board be better informed about the input that was given to the applicant from the Department of Public Works, the Conservation Commission, and the Building Inspector, all of whom the applicant has recently met. The applicant has also hired a firm to undertake plans, but those plans won't be ready for a couple of weeks. I thought it was fair for the planning board only to hear in the event there were some serious issues. I think what we'd like to do is submit the plans, get input, develop those plans, and then report back to the planning board where we are. So we would be better informed to answer any questions the planning board may have. And for those reasons, I would ask for a continuance, please.
Okay. Do we have, hear a motion?
Yeah, move to continue.
Second.
So voting to continue, zone change number 3227, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Dan Yelly?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes, and I'd like to add that it's nice to know that at least they're doing their due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
And Ms. Choi absent. Finally, under public hearings continued, the subdivision plan for Veterans Way. Again, we actually had a meeting today on that. There are still a number of issues that are being reviewed by the Department of Public Works as well as the Conservation Commission, so they are hoping in within the next two weeks to be able to address those and move this forward, but at this time, I have not received any approvals from either of those bodies, so I would ask the board to continue this until the 16th as well.
Motion to continue.
Second.
So voting to continue subdivision for Veterans Way, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Dan Yelly?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
And Ms. Choi absent, so that will be continued as well. Okay, moving on to the public hearings for new items. Liquor license and all alcoholic liquor license new, location 254 Worthington Street petitioner. And I made a mistake on the original agenda. I had put Funny Bone Inc. It's actually Funny Bunny Inc. and it's doing business as Jackalope.
Who is here to speak in favor of this petition?
That's me, Andrew Brow.
Hi, Andrew. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Andrew Brow. Residential address?
Whichever.
Residential address, 30 Bel Air Drive, Long Meadow, Massachusetts.
Thank you. Why don't you tell us a little bit about what you are requesting in this alcohol?
Okay, so I'm just looking for annual full, new annual full liquor license. I sent over the menu and the drink menu, so I'm not sure if all of you got it. So we're trying to open up a creative American casual fine dining restaurant in the former Adolfo's location on Worthington Street. I already have the support of the downtown Civic Association. And we're trying to open up as soon as we can.
I did email out the menu. I don't, I can bring it up if the board wants me to share the screen. I can, if people didn't have a chance to review that.
No, I have it. I don't know about anybody else.
Yeah, I have it here too.
I have it.
Okay. Tell us about who your employees will be. I see at the bottom you have listed the proprietor, the manager.
So I have a managing partner, I have two managing partners. So one of them is the chef and one of them is my general manager. I also own a restaurant in North Hampton called Highbrow Woodfire Kitchen and Bar. And I also have the kitchen in the White Lion Brewery in Tower Square downtown Springfield as well.
Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, creative, so the whole ambiance, like creative, casual, fine dining, in a non-stuffy environment, welcoming and warm. Again, like I told the Civic Association, I'm not going for the nightclub scene, you know, we're serving dinner and then some drinks after and closing up relatively early, so.
Okay.
It's a restaurant, restaurant and craft cocktail bar and wine bar, craft beer.
And how many people will you be employing?
Twenty-five.
Okay.
Twenty-five minimum.
Going to be tip certified?
A hundred percent. That's, that's one of my, my restaurant group's requirements. All my, all my front of the house staff management are tips management certified, serve safe certified. And all the waitstaff will be tip certified, correct?
Okay, and who will be in charge of the premise? Because you're not going to be there. I mean, you're going to have to.
I'm going to be there. I'm going to be there. I'm going to be there most of the time, but Johnny Tran is my managing general manager.
Okay.
But this is closer to home, so I'll be spending most of my time at this location, so.
All right. Do any board members have questions?
One of the things we usually ask about is experience, and obviously you've got a lot of other restaurants that you're running, so that doesn't seem to be new to you.
Looks pretty straightforward and.
It's nice to see that that building would be opened up and operated again.
Wait, wait, you see, wait, you see the inside. I've dumped a little, little bit of change in there and it looks like a whole new place. Nice brightly vibrant colors, blue light fixture. The place is gorgeous. It's already gorgeous on the inside too.
I'd like to see it.
It's going to be a good time. Thank you.
I think just the one, you guys, like in the summertime, you'll open the patio back up and.
Yep, yep. Great, absolutely.
What are you going to do? Is there going to be entertainment or just background music?
I'm just background music. I have Sonos and I was talking to the Civic Association about the possibility of having like a, like live, like a jazz band or something like that on the patio on the weekends in the summer, but for the most part, again, this is a restaurant. This is not an entertainment venue.
Okay.
So if permitted, you know, I like to have some live music once in a while, but not, not the standard by any means, special occasion.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Phil, did we get anything from the Civic Association?
I didn't.
Okay.
I have a letter I can forward over to Phil if you need me.
All right, that would be good. Thank you.
Yeah, I can send that over right away.
All right. If the board has no further questions, I will accept a motion to continue the hearing.
Move to continue.
Second.
So voting to continue the liquor license for 254 Worthington Street, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Dan Yelly?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
Ms. Choi absent, so this will be continued until the 16th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, guys. I'll send that right over. Thank you.
All right.
Again, under public hearings, new and all alcoholic liquor license, the location 1,000 Hall of Fame Way. Petitioner P2B, P2B Springfield LLC, doing business as The Place To Be.
Paul Malick, attorney for the petitioner. Dordy Wallace, Pillsbury and Murphy, One Monarch Place Springfield. Here with Zach Morton, who is the proposed manager for this location. This location is the former site of Samuel's, which has been out of business for a while now. Place To Be is focused on food, creative menu, which I've sent in to Phil. The last thing they want to do is be a bar. They do not want to be a hangout bar. They're a family restaurant. Their emphasis is on food and good service. They will close at eight o'clock every day for seven days a week. The principals in the business are very well experienced. They have four restaurants presently in Hartford. They have a restaurant in New Haven. Zach is a part of those businesses, but he will be relocating up to Springfield so that he can work full-time at the Springfield venue. There is, there will be rather inside and outside security. They've made investments in equipment. All the employees will be tips certified. And Zach has about six and a half years of experience ordering and serving liquor.
Okay. Zach, would you like to say anything?
Sure. So my, my name is Zacharice Morton. I'm from the greater Hartford area. And Paul touched on a lot of items, so I've been in the restaurant industry for the last six and a half years officially, unofficially, because I was a corporate accountant for some time. But we've, we've always owned restaurants. Like Paul said, I've, I've been around liquor since I was, you know, 20, 21 plus. So I'll, like you said, I'll be relocating to Springfield full-time until we fully establish a general manager in place, whom which will be tip certified and serve safe certified. All of our staff in our current locations are tip certified. It's a requirement of our group. So, yeah.
Okay.
Gloria?
Yes, Leo.
I just wanted to say Mr. Morton came down and met with our neighborhood council last week, went over the whole process and answered all of the questions and took a vote. It was a unanimous vote to support this. And quite honestly, we can't wait to get it into our neighborhood.
Great, thank you. I just want to check the hours. It's Monday through Friday, 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM and then five to seven, but and Saturday and Sunday all day, but what does that mean? When do you start on Saturday?
It's, it's seven, seven to eight. I think when I filled out the application, it mentioned peak hours, so I was.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, our hours are seven to eight PM, seven days a week.
Okay, I apologize, looking at the wrong line. What you get when you have bifocals.
It says seven to nine PM on the hours of Monday through Sunday.
Okay.
It might have been a transposition. I'm, I'm sorry.
No, it was, it's my glasses. I caught it at the line, so I couldn't see. All right. Any of the other board members have any other questions? Looks like a nice menu.
Thank you.
The restaurants in Hartford, are they the same type of restaurant or is this just new for Springfield?
It's new for Springfield, so they're sisters, not twins. Each restaurant is catered to its area, so each of them have similar items, but this one will be catered to specifically Springfield and/or the Basketball Hall of Fame, so.
Okay.
Can we find out who the restaurants are in Hartford?
And what?
It's all the same, so it's, it's all the place to be. So if you look up the place to be, you'll.
Oh, I see. Okay, they all have the same name. All right.
Yes, ma'am.
I have to say, I'm thrilled to have a breakfast and lunch place. That's something we're really short of in Springfield, so I'm, I'm happy to see something like that. And I'm happy on the drive to Hartford to go there, so.
All right, if there are no other questions from the board, I will accept a motion to continue the hearing.
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing.
I'll second.
Thank you, Phil.
So voting to continue liquor license for 1,000 Hall of Fame Way, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Dan Yelly?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
And Ms. Choi absent, so this will be continued until the 16th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
And finally, under public hearings for liquor licenses and all alcoholic liquor license new for 770 Bay Street. Petitioner Goldos Pollo LLC, doing business as L. Ambante? If I pronounced that right?
Almost.
Beyonce?
Yes, there you go.
There you go.
Perfect.
Okay. If the petitioner would state their name and address?
Hi, good.
Tell us a little bit.
Sure, good evening. My name is Frank Keo. I'm friendly with the Rosarios, who are the petitioners. They're all sitting around me this evening. Say hello. I just wanted to kind of give you a quick background. Mr. Rosario has a little bit of a challenge with some of the English, so they asked me to come in and help them out. I've known the family for 25 years. They're looking to obtain a liquor license. They're looking to refurbish and reestablish what I used to call is the old Antonio's Grinders on the corner of Bay and Tap, for all of us who are old enough to remember Antonio's. They have gone before the Bay Area Neighborhood Council, and we are pleased to let you know that the Bay Area Neighborhood Council has written a letter which we can send to you. They enthusiastically endorsed this project and proposal. They think it's going to be an asset to the neighborhood. One of the things that we think are pretty unique here is this, it's a totally family-run business and all the principals live right here in the neighborhood. I'm actually at the location now with most of the people who will be working here. Mr. Rosario Senior has over 20 years of extensive business in the restaurant, experience in the restaurant business. He's owned and operated two successful restaurants here in the city of Springfield. One, the old Indian Orchard Seafood Restaurant in the Orchard. And the second was on CC's Deli on 314 Bay Street for many years, both of which were great, successful, and he has a wealth of experience. His son, Manny, is also going to be part of the family business, as well as Jaslin here, who's sitting right here next to me. She is also going to be the bar manager. She is tip certified, a family member as well. His other family member who will be working here as also a co-manager is Assad Arwan. All of them live in the Springfield. Mr. Rosario himself lives on Welcome Place. His son Manny lives on King Street. Jaslin lives on Union Street. And so it's a neighborhood family operation, and they're very excited. The reason they're asking for this, their concept is going to be very similar to Pilates on Boston Road. I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with Pilates. It's really a very unique concept. It's a lot of brunch, and they're going to be doing something very similar. It's obviously not going to be a nightclub. They're not looking for any entertainment license or any live music or anything else like that. What they're looking to do is to create an environment where people can come in. Obviously, it is going to have an ethnic flavor to it. They feel as though a lot of their customers will be from the neighborhood and a lot of African Americans and Latinos who've already stopped in, who know Mr. Rosario and the family, and they're excited to see these guys open. So we have presented a plan. I think our architect Gregory Neffiger is with us, has a plan if you'd like to look at it, but we did bring up a plan to the Neighborhood Council as well as a menu. I can send both of those over to you if you would like to look at them, as well as the letter from the Bay Area Neighborhood Council enthusiastically supporting this petition. And we'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you, that you can and as best we can, and Manny will probably speak a lot for his dad, who just has a little bit of a challenge with the language.
We do have a copy of the plan, and we do have a copy of the menu.
Okay, and we'll be happy to send you a letter because we're so happy to partner with the Bay Area Neighborhood Council. They were terrific and very supportive, and we do have that letter, which we can send to you if you would like to see it.
Frank, if you would just email that to me.
Yeah, Phil, what's your email? Quickly, I haven't done right now.
P. Dromy, D R O M E Y, at SpringfieldCityHall.com.
Springfield spelled out, Phil?
Yep.
CityHall.com?
Yep.
Okay, I'll do that right now, Phil. So that's kind of the concept. It's going to be, you know, a few seats, not that, not that many more than was originally in here. Probably, they're going to probably have open for cooking hours and to keep the restaurant open till probably around midnight. Serving food possibly on Thursday and Friday and Saturday a little bit later. Obviously going to comply with the city rules and regulations if they're fortunate enough to be granted a liquor license. And it's basically going to be a family-run food operation.
I have a question for you. You've attached a menu here. Is this the final menu or will there be more items added later on?
I think they're going to add more menu items as, as the customers come in and they establish, you know, what they're looking to do, but for right now, they're going to start with that menu and as they discuss it and kind of work the kinks out. Obviously, there'll be some daily specials and some additions to the menu as they go on. And we'd be happy to update you when they can figure that all out.
Do any of the board members have questions?
Just got one question, Frank. The, the planning department, I guess had a concern over the two o'clock closing. Have you looked at that or?
They did. I think honestly, part of it in talking to them, they feel as though a lot of their, their customers, if you will, and the, and the the target audience that they're looking for, they feel trying to stay open till two o'clock is going to give them an opportunity to reach their customer base far better than if they closed early. Obviously, what they would do, Leo, would be if, obviously, if all of a sudden the business doesn't dictate it or warrant it, obviously, they're not going to stay open that late. But they would like the flexibility if this concept they think is going to work, similar to Pilates on Boston Road. I mean, what they're looking to do, honestly, guys, is, is kind of mirror a very successful operation on Boston Road and bring it here to Bay Street.
Thank you.
I, I think that was the same thing. My concern is, you're saying it's primarily a food restaurant, you know, it's a food place.
Yes.
But most food places aren't open till two in the morning. That's typically a drinking bar type situation. So if, if that's not what they're going for, would they consider midnight and then later on apply for later hours if they feel they have the need?
I'm just going to say right up front that I have no issues with the 2:00 AM close for a couple of reasons. One, the location where this, this place is, I mean, it's, it's well off from any sort of residential property that, you know, might have sound issues or noise complaints. And the second one is, you know, this property itself has changed ownership, you know, quite a bit over the last handful of years. I work right next to it, you know, and if giving them an opportunity to stay open to 2:00 AM, you know, might ensure that, you know, we have a long-term business established there. I know, I think that's something that we should consider.
We will obviously certainly be very grateful for any kind of consideration you give us. Obviously, what we're looking to do is just mirror other restaurants that have a similar concept, and I think if you took a look at our menu as well as, as what they're looking to kind of create inside this property and mirror that with Pilates, I think you would see, you know, whatever hours they have, we'd be very happy to, to, you know, be consistent. And if you feel as though perhaps we would need to do that, or whatever you think to give the board confidence, obviously, we have to consider that and we'd be happy to agree to it, but obviously, for us to make the kind of financial commitment that they're looking to make and obviously what they've poured into this already, taking this over, because candidly, the inside probably hasn't changed in 40 years. And so it kind of needs, it's tired, it needs kind of a facelift, and they're prepared to do all of that. Obviously, just looking to see if they can make sure they recoup their investment. But whatever the board in your wisdom feels as though is appropriate, obviously, we will live with that. We obviously just like to be consistent with everybody else.
Frank, can I just ask you quick, the Neighborhood Council, they did not have an issue with the 2:00 AM?
No.
Okay.
And you can double check that, Phil, because I don't want to speak to anybody, but, you know, it was, it was a very well-received meeting. And I think people are happy that they think it could be assets to the neighborhood. I also think though, in speaking, some of the evenings, obviously, guys, you know, aren't, there aren't going to be people here till two o'clock and they're not going to stay open for the heck of it, so, you know, perhaps if it, if we need to adjust on maybe the weekends or whatever to start to give you guys confidence that this is going to be successful and you know what they're doing. They're willing to work with the commission, obviously very appreciative. You're giving them an opportunity to at least be considered, so we're going to live it and be enthusiastic for whatever you decide in your wisdom, as long as obviously it can be revisited. Again, we just felt as though when we started with this project, we looked at the establishment that we're looking to mirror, so to speak, and we were trying to actually kind of just be consistent with what they have, because they're obviously very successful.
Thank you. Leo, I agree with, Luca, I agree with you because there is nothing there other than Okro Cemetery. And so I don't think that the two o'clock closing will be an issue. I would just like to remind the petitioner that if you're going to stay open that late and serve liquor, you have to also be prepared to be continuing. that if you're going to stay open that late and serve liquor, you have to also be prepared to be continuing your keeping your kitchen open.
Yes, no, no, I'm sorry. The food is what they, the food's the draw. The alcohol is is not going to be a bar. If you take a look at the bar that they have, it's basically more for seating because it's a very small footprint. I think there are seven seats at the bar. So it's not going to be like a big horseshoe bar or anything else like that. This is more much more of a restaurant flavor, a restaurant appeal. And the seats at the bar honestly are primarily for just having some additional seats where people can come in and eat, or people taking takeout can sit and wait. It's a restaurant. The kitchen will remain open till at least twelve or twelve thirty as long as they're open. So if all of a sudden on a Monday night at eleven o'clock, there's nobody been in for an hour, they may close early. But if they're open, the kitchen's open till at least midnight, maybe even a little bit later. And obviously, they would adhere to closing at the right time and everything else.
Well, if you're going to stay open till two o'clock, liquor ends at one thirty, Peter, I hope I have this correct. So that means your kitchen has to be open till at least one o'clock. Do I have that right?
Correct.
So just so you, that's what I was referring to.
Thank you so much for reminding us. Thank you. No, exactly. Whatever the whatever the requirements are, they're going to follow.
Okay. All right. Do any of the other board, any of the board members have any other questions? Hearing no questions, further questions, I will accept a motion to continue the hearing.
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing.
Thank you, Jen. Rico, did you second? Thank you.
So voting to continue the liquor license for seven seventy Bay Street, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Mr. Moran? I think you said yes.
Sorry, yes.
Ms. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuade?
Yes.
Ms. Choi absent. This will be continued until the sixteenth.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Finally, under public hearings, we have a zone change number three two two eight. The address is fifty-three Wilberham Road and forty-two Waltham Avenue. The zone change from industrial A to business B. The petitioner is Knox one and two LP.
Well, petitioner or representative, please state your name and address and give us a little bit of a run, well, a rundown, I guess.
Certainly. Good evening. My name is Gordon Pulsford, president of First Resource Development Company, two thousand and one. Hanover Street in Hanover, Mass. I'm sorry, Washington Street, Hanover, Mass. Here this evening to ask for zone change for forty-two Waltham Ave and fifty-three Wilberham Road, which is the Knox Automobile Factory Building. In March of two thousand and twenty-one, a special permit was issued to build residential housing in two phases in this building. It was discovered during our construction loan closing last month that industrial zone does not permit for housing. So we're here tonight to remove industrial zone from this building at these two addresses and change it to business B, which does allow residential housing. Under the industrial A zone, not only does it not allow for residential housing, there was no relief or a way to change it through a city council or any other committee in the city. The zone just just does not permit residential housing. So we're here this evening to ask that the planning board change this to business B. And I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you. Do any of the board members have questions?
Just just for the board's information, just just fifty-three Wilberham Road is actually the, it was a city-owned building. You know, I'm sure everybody's seen it on Wilberham Road. It's been vacant for a number of years. The city took it for tax title a number of years and it's been vacant. The city has put it out for RRP a number of times without any successful bidders. It went out last year, I think a year and a half ago. And First Resources was selected as preferred developer. So this certainly is a project that the city is hoping to get moving. And again, it was is really an oversight that a portion of the property on fifty-three Wilberham Road is own business B, but the rest of it is own industrial A. And as Mr. Pulsford mentioned, industrial A just does not allow housing. But the special permit was approved by the city council. So it kind of chicken before the egg, but we're back here to try and get the project moving.
In both phases, Phil, just to inform you, both phases have now been funded by the governor. So we're we're moving down the construction path until we discovered the information about the industrial zone.
That must have been quite a shock to get that part down the line.
The attorneys are about to issue their zoning opinion. And then it's whoops. So here we are.
Okay, well, I think it's pretty straightforward, but do any of the board members have questions?
Yeah, I just, Luca Minion with the DPW. Gordon, how far along are you guys with your plan development?
We're totally complete, Luca. I know we're working with DPW on some questions they had on the plans. And but our plans are nearly a hundred percent complete. We were about to start construction. We've been working with EverSource on the electric and gas connections and DPW. For the water and sewer.
Yeah, and you've you've spoken with Water and Sewer. They've they've okayed it?
They haven't okayed it. They've asked questions and plans are being changed to meet and answer their questions.
Yeah, that's good. They've heading coming into the new year, they've kind of changed some regulations they had about connections into combined lines. And just wanted to make you guys aware of that, that, you know, they're kind of going to be a hurdle that you're going to have to jump through to to kind of get going. But, yeah, looking forward to seeing the plan the next time I get into the office. I'll be sure to take a good look at it.
Great. Thanks for your help.
If there are no further questions, I will accept a motion to continue the hearing.
Motion to continue.
Thank you, Leo.
Second.
Thank you, Luca.
So voting to continue zone change number three two two eight, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuade?
Yes.
And Ms. Choi absent. So this will be continued until the sixteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so lastly, I don't have any subdivision plans tonight, the non-subdivision plan. Under all matters before the board, I'm here with a number of other folks here to provide an update on the Court Square renewal plan. Tim Sheehan, the chief development officer. Amanda Pham is the director of the Springfield Redevelopment Authority. Tim Brangle is from the Chicago Consultants Studio. And also Jeff Fraser from the BSC Group will provide that, an update to you guys about the work being done for the Court Square renewal plan. So turn it over to you guys.
All right. Again, my name's Amanda Pham. I'm the executive director of the Redevelopment Authority. We're working with the Chicago Consulting Group on a Court Square major plan change as well as a consolidation effort. As you may all know, the plan originated back in nineteen seventy and made way for many advances in development in the downtown area. The major amendment number is number twelve, and it should align the urban design standards from the master development plan that you probably had seen and was approved by council last March. So these efforts and some of the objectives would be to bolster the pedestrian experience, encourage cohesive districts, and encourage development. So to further explain the efforts for the the major plan change, we have Tim Brangle from Chicago Consulting Studios to present some of the objectives and strategies.
Great. Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, everyone. I'm Tim Brangle with Chicago Consulting Studio, joined with Jeff Fasser from BCS Group. He's going to actually do the bulk of the talking since he's been tasked with this this monumental task, actually, of consolidating fifty years and eleven amendments and now drafting the twelfth. Jeff, if you want to pull up, we have a presentation to very quick. This is really just a snapshot to give you a quick update. This will be coming back to you for review. So it's it's this is just intended to give you a little bit of flavor of what's going on and why we're doing this. So, yeah, we'll talk a little bit about the objectives, get into some of the key tasks that Jeff Jeff is undertaking, and then get in a little bit of the amendment twelve and then talk about the process. Let's just go to the next slide, please. As Amanda alluded to, you know, we worked on the master development plan, which was an outgrowth of an economic development initiative called the Implementation Blueprint. That plan really focused in this area around two major anchors of MGM and Mass Mutual Center. And we put that plan together and are now coming back and putting the other tools in place, if you will, to help foster the implementation. Tied to this is the Urban Renewal District, on which this is a major component. So this plan actually will set some of the guidelines and some regulations to update that plan and make it current, as well as we talk about some of the consolidation. So primary focus, as Amanda alluded to, really on ground floor activation. So we'll be looking carefully at at regulations that help bolster that, as she said. Really, the the bulk of it, though, I'm going to turn over to Jeff to kind of take through briefly on some of the other aspects of the plan.
Thank you, Tim. It's nice to be in front of you all this evening. So as Tim and Amanda mentioned, there's really two elements that are going into this amendment twelve. One is a consolidation of all the the original plan with all the previous eleven amendments. And one of the reasons we're doing this is because this is a number of separate documents. And we wanted to create a document where all the information from the last fifty years, all the relevant and pertinent information is in one document. So we're bringing that, all that information into this document, either in the report itself or as attachments. So there'll be one source of information for the evolution and the current status of your Court Square Urban Renewal Plan. But also in doing so, as you can imagine, over the last fifty years, regulations for urban renewal plans have changed. So this information will be packaged in a way that meets the current state's requirements for urban renewal plans, which were adopted in two thousand and eighteen. Even though there have been many, many changes over the years. So it's kind of challenging to find the information from a whole plan and plug it in the right place in this new one. One of the things we've done as part of this consolidation is looked at the boundary changes over the years. Not every amendment included a boundary change, but in this map, as you can see now, that's been color-coded. You can see the different boundary changes that have occurred over the years, with the black boundary being the very original boundary, the red being amendment number one, and then subsequent additions to that boundary over the years. So you can see what's grown to meet the needs of the community, the needs of downtown and address various properties in the downtown area. As part of this current amendment twelve, we are looking at the potential of another boundary change, which is shown here in brown, and then this is still evolving. This may change. But right now, I just wanted to give you a snapshot that we are looking at adding property south of Court Square. It's primarily city or state-owned property here. There's a city-owned, the old church in that area is owned by the city. There are some other city-owned properties as well as state-owned properties. And by including them within the boundary, it gives the Redevelopment Authority the ability to help if something or a developer comes along or there's some initiative from the city that to undertake to improve those properties, enhance them, rehabilitate them, et cetera. It being in the boundary gives the Redevelopment Authority the ability to bring some of their tools to the table if it's going to help with any redevelopment initiatives in that area. You will notice that City Hall and Symphony Hall are within this boundary. They're not going to be touched. No one needs to worry about that. But we do need to have a nice kind of consistent boundary, and they just happen to fall within that boundary exchange. Another thing we're consolidating in amendment twelve is all of the objectives from the original plan in the past eleven amendments. And as we've all looked at this, we realize that most of the, if not all of the previous objectives are still relevant. They're still pertinent. They talk about eliminating blight, higher density development, improving the pedestrian environment, et cetera, et cetera. So we're summarizing those and carrying them forward in amendment twelve. They're still appropriate. But we're also adding to it a lot of the objectives out of the master development plan that was mentioned earlier by Tim. So we're updating it. So it's current and it's not only supporting past efforts, but thinking towards now and then the future when it comes to certain objectives for downtown. Another thing we're looking at is as part of those prior amendments, certain redevelopment review processes that are in place for projects within the downtown, within the urban renewal area. And these are review processes that could be done by the city and/or the Redevelopment Authority. So there are a lot of them in the prior amendments. And it's been a process to kind of go through them and eliminate the controls that are no longer relevant, eliminate controls that are no longer appropriate, and kind of distill it down to what's still appropriate. We want to carry forward and keep them in and make everybody aware of them. So that's part of the consolidation process that's still, we're still slugging through that right now. When it comes to the planning board, we wanted to give you this update and overview because it will be coming back to you. This slide here references the chapters of Mass General Law that talks about the requirements of the Urban Renewal Program and certain actions that require a planning board interaction. And it's kind of summarized in more readable terms on this next slide here. And that is, we'll be coming back to you, we, meaning the Redevelopment Authority and the team, coming back to you and asking for you to review the plan and confirm that it is in conformance with other planning documents the city has for specifically the downtown area or the urban renewal area. The state wants to know that whatever Redevelopment Authority is producing from a plan is consistent with other planning documents the city has. And you are the, as the planning board, one of the agencies that needs to confirm that the plan is consistent with other planning documents. So we come back to you. That is one of the findings we will be asking you to make at that point. And then, once that happens, as you can see, it's update the planning board. And we also have a citizens advisory committee we work, we are working with. But once the plan is pulled together as a draft, we then, again, come back to you. We go to city council for their approval. The Redevelopment Authority, after getting everybody else's approval, gives their final approval. And then it goes to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. They're the final approving entity for the plan. So until the state gives its final approval, it's really not an official plan. And then one last step is there's a permitting process through the state's called the MEPA office. That just basically a permitting process that puts the public on notice that this urban renewal plan has been prepared, is being proposed for implementation, gives the general public yet another opportunity to comment on it. And once MEPA issues their certificate, then the Redevelopment Authority at that point can start undertaking actions that are the new actions that are part of amendment twelve. They can undertake anything that's been proved prior to this point. That's all been permitted. It'll just be the new amendment twelve actions that will be subject to MEPA review. That's a very quick overview. Happy to answer any questions you have, but really wanted to let you know what was going on because we will be coming back to you with the plan and asking for your findings.
Are there any questions from the board members?
I guess my only one is timeline. What are we looking at for a timeline?
I'm happy to tackle that one. We are hoping, actually, Tim, we talked about this earlier. Why don't you take this one? Because we've been back and forth.
Yeah, we're still, as Jeff alluded, we're looking at the overall boundaries. We are advancing particularly that area that is expanding. There's some discussion about whether there's other properties that would go into this or other parcels. So that's ongoing right now. It's probably, you know, the consolidated plan is basically done. We're now working on the amendment over the next month. If some things change, it might extend that a little bit. So we're probably within a two-month timeframe coming back with, you know, as an outlier, probably a two-month timeframe to come back with a consolidation plan.
The short answer is we'd like to be to the state late spring, early summer.
Okay. And I just have a question. Boundary, does that include the building that's across the street from city, from Symphony Hall? Not, not old church, old first church, but what used to be the elder fairs?
The GRA?
I guess.
On the other side of Columbus Avenue?
Yes.
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. Phil, do we need to, we don't need to continue this, do we?
Oh, no, this is, this was just an update. There's really no action required by the board.
Okay. Well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, or lady and gentlemen, for providing us this update. And we will see you in a couple of months.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a nice evening. All right, Phil, I guess we will.
Yeah, there's no other items on the agenda, so.
Somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
We'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, who's the second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor. Bye.